Dr. Sevier, if you could please start with a roll call.
Dr. Gentry. Ms. Elrod.
Present.
Ms. Spearing.
Present.
Ms. Bugs.
Present.
Ms. Bush.
Present.
Ms. Player Peters.
Present.
Ms. Pupa Walker.
Present.
Ms. Froak.
Present.
Madam Chair, you have seven members present.
Okay, thank you. So now we will turn to governance issues with the consent agenda. Are there any changes to the consent agenda before I entertain a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Ms. Spearing. I would like to pull A1C, number 18, the Florida Virtual School, please.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Pupa Walker?
Yeah, I want to pull three policies that were not discussed today in our Governance Committee. So pull off 3.210, 4.606, and 6.200. And go ahead and submit the other policies as amended today in the Governance Committee meeting.
Okay. Okay, I will entertain a motion on the remaining items on the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, this is Jill Spearing.
Yes, Ms. Spearing.
Yes. I move to approve the consent agenda with those exceptions that have been noted.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I know it's not discussion because it's consent agenda, I'm sorry. So we will take a vote. Dr. Sevier.
Dr. Gentry. I don't believe she's joined, is she? Ms. Elrod.
Yes.
Ms. Elrod votes aye. Ms. Spearing.
Aye.
Spearing votes aye. Ms. Bugs.
Aye.
Ms. Bugs votes aye. Ms. Bush.
Aye.
Ms. Bush votes aye. Ms. Player Peters.
Aye.
Ms. Player Peters votes aye. Ms. Pupa Walker.
Aye.
Ms. Pupa Walker votes aye. Dr. Gentry, has she joined? Ms. Froak.
All right. The motion is approved.
Is that an aye, Ms. Froak? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was a vote, yes, aye.
You have seven ayes, Ms. Froak.
Okay. Now the motion is approved. Okay. So now we're going to turn to consent agenda item A1C18, Florida Virtual Schools. Ms. Spearing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have about eight or nine questions. So I'll be as quick as I can. One of the major concerns that I've heard is that this is a five-year contract. And it's a million dollars each year. Is there any opposition from Dr. Battle to make this a one-year contract?
Hi, Ms. Spearing.
Hi.
Good evening. Thank you for your question there with regards to the Florida Virtual School contract, which is a five-year contract. Part of the reason that you see that before you tonight as a five-year contract is because that is the online curriculum that our MMPS Virtual School uses. And so we were fortunate enough to be in this RFP process prior to our extended school closure and being able to leverage potentially this curriculum based upon board approval tonight. But our reality is, is even beyond this potential school year being and started with the virtual setting, moving beyond this year, we will still need access to the virtual school content for our MMPS Virtual School. And you all might be aware that our MMPS Virtual School has been utilized in the FLVS curriculum for over 10 years now. And so that's why that five-year contract was in play. In addition to that, there are always, with any of our contracts, no guarantees that we would, it would be necessary for us to use them over that extended amount of time. So just to recap, there is a need for MMPS Virtual School to have access to the online curriculum because it is a virtual school. But also, we are looking to leverage FLVS during this time of virtual learning for the entire district. I hope that answers your question.
It sure does, Dr. Battle. Thank you. The, a million dollars a year, how is that calculated? Is that calculated as a unit or is that calculated per student?
All right, I'm going to kick that over to our contracting team. Let's see, who might be? Just looking through who's on the line here. David, you might actually be the best person to chime in. You or Mr. Hanson to answer that specific question.
Yes, ma'am. Thanks, Dr. Battle, and thanks for the question, Ms. Spearing. So the cost was based on access to the entire suite of their courses, which includes over 190 courses, and that's K-12. So that was, that makes up, of course, the preponderance of the cost there. There will, there is also a provision, as was included in the RFP, for virtual staffing in the case of teacher vacancies as needed. So there's a small provision for that, as well as any supplemental professional development that we might need to support the implementation. So those three buckets comprise that roughly a million dollars a year on average as we execute the contract. As Dr. Battle mentioned, when we get out of the pandemic situation, we may not need as much across the entire district for the coming years, throughout the five years. So the actual pay price would go down and we'd go back to simply using this for our MMPS Virtual School.
Of course, thank you.
If I can echo Ms. Spearing, one thing that David brought up, just in case it is a question with regards to leveraging teachers, our goal is still to be 100% staffed by the first day of school. So we are by no means looking to replace our teachers with FLVS staff. It is just there if there's an emergency case. But we're still pushing forward to be 100% staffed for the first day of school.
Thank you. In terms of the assessments, will they be part of the Florida Virtual School or will they be teacher-generated or a combination of the two?
And the modules for Florida Virtual School, and David, feel free to chime in, there are embedded assessments that are in there. But we are looking to leverage some of our tools that we've been using, i.e., MAP, for assessing particularly the learning loss for our students after we kick off the school year. But there are options and embedded assessments that are part of the modules for FLVS. And what's been communicated to our principals and our teachers is that we are looking to leverage a standardized curriculum across the board for many reasons, particularly given the uncertainty with our COVID-19 scenario here locally. But also, given some flexibility, the standard being standard, but giving our strong instructional designer teachers the opportunity to enhance lessons, given that we are still remaining fairly consistent with implementation of FLVS.
Thank you. Oh, is there a variance between the Florida State standards and the Tennessee State standards?
I'll take that, Dr. Battle. There is some mispearing. At a high level, there is a lot of consistencies. Florida standards are highly similar to Tennessee standards. Where it's natural, where we see the biggest discrepancy would be, of course, in social studies, where a lot of the geography or history might be tailored to Florida specifically, as opposed to Tennessee. So our content teams are well ahead of the game and have been working hard to ensure that those gaps are closed and that the curriculum as provided to our teachers is aligned to Tennessee State standards. And we are certainly involving teachers in that process. Pending the board approval of the contract tonight, we're going to move forward with gaining access to begin working on those very things.
In addition to our MMPS Virtual School, who has already started a lot of that alignment, particularly in all of our secondary courses. So that work has started, given the work that the MMPS Virtual School kicked off again over 10 years ago in that standards alignment.
Great, thank you. Does this have to be approved? Or maybe it's already been approved by the State Department?
The actual curriculum.
Right.
Not specifically the curriculum. What we will be presenting, we have to submit to the state later this month, is our Continuative Learning Plan, or I believe they call it a Continuous Learning Plan. We will be submitting that for approval. And that is a much more comprehensive report of how we're addressing the start of the school year, given that everyone will be in a very unique situation. And so it is a part of the plan. But the plan we have to submit for approval is much more comprehensive. So we will have to speak to the curriculum that we're utilizing. And there are rubrics aligned to that. But according to the rubric and according to the information we have, we shouldn't have a problem with utilizing the standardized curriculum for our courses. And other districts will likely leverage FLVS as well.
Great. It's my understanding that the plan, the curriculum, is starting at third or fourth grade through high school. What about K-2, K-3, K-4? Is that a unit that we will also encompass within the Florida Virtual School?
We are looking to leverage FLVS for our K-12 curriculum. Of course, the 612 curriculum, we already have access to in our district. And for our pre-K students, we're looking to leverage our creative curriculum, which they've already been utilizing and engaging our youngest learners with. And we want that continuity for them to really balance out in an age-appropriate manner, the amount of time that they're spending online versus hands-on learning. And we have some variation for that as well for elementary students.
Okay. I understand that the parent participation requires four to six hours a day. Is that correct?
You want to respond to that date, Dr. Williams?
In terms of the participation for parents, I'm not aware of any specific requirements for parents. What we shared with principals today is that our teachers are going to be providing a significant number of synchronous learning opportunities to provide direct instruction and engagement with our kids. And so what we worked on today with our principals was mapping out those expectations over the course of the day and over the course of the week. So there will be plenty of opportunities for our students to engage in a face-to-face virtual environment with our teachers. Any additional asynchronous supports that would be beyond that would be on a small order of just a few hours a day. So as Dr. Battle has been very clear, we're expecting to meet the expectations for a full day of learning. For our younger students, that may be anywhere from, say, two, two and a half hours a day, with the balance being a combination of asynchronous student-led supports in conjunction with the parents as appropriate.
So the independent learning that the students will be doing during a portion of the day, they don't need to have a parent overseeing that? Is that, am I understanding correctly?
My understanding is that it's intended for students to be able to pursue themselves. So if they, if any parent involvement would, might need to be for navigating the technology and using the devices, which is always going to be helpful. So, you know, we know that anytime students have engaged parents, they're more successful. So I think that would be no different here in this case. But in terms of a requirement, I'm not aware of any specific requirement where students can't complete the content in absence of a parent.
Okay.
And it is, it is a self-paced, self-paced modules and courses for our students. And I think we can fully anticipate that early on, we might see more of a need for parent support and engagement with being successful in the online platform. And I think over time, as students begin to access and get in the rhythm of their synchronous and asynchronous learning opportunities, that it will be less of the parental need. But of course, we always would encourage parents to be engaged, to be connected. It's a, it's a new window for parents to always kind of be sitting in the back of the classroom as their student is engaging with their peers and also with their teachers. And so parent support is definitely welcomed. But we're trying to establish our expectations for our students on a daily basis, as well as our teachers, to be able to provide support to parents who want to be there with their students, but not necessarily require a complete hands-on with every activity or assessment they might be working on.
Great. I'm just really concerned about those K-2 students. That seems like a lot to manipulate. But thank you very much for your answers. And Madam Chair, I move to approve the Florida Virtual Schools.
I have a couple of questions real quick.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So can you all talk just a little bit about how you imagine using Florida Virtual School to support students learning English and students with disabilities?
Yes, we can. And David, you will likely want to chime in here, chime in here as you're working closely with our exceptional ed and our EL departments. And so what we've been working on, Ms. Pupa Walker, is first, access to the gray level content for all of our students, which we've been able to vet because we've worked with FLVS in-house. And so we know the rigor and the level of engagement that will be provided for our students. We are also housing our online curriculum, as deemed approved by the board, in our Schoolology platform. And through, by having in our Schoolology platform, our students will have access to the modifications and accommodations that are provided through Schoolology. And so students will have tools for translation, for other supports with regards to accessing the content. And of course, during this virtual learning environment for this school year, we are also expanding to provide the synchronous learning opportunities with teachers. And so that's bodily important. With our exceptional education students, of which I'm going to talk about a little bit later in my director's report, we are expanding our, again, a support in the virtual space. So we're going to be reaching out to parents, working closely with teachers and the exceptional education department to transfer the strategies and supports that are currently in the students' IEP to what we're calling CLIPS for our students. And that's just a simple transfer of what's required in their IEP to what's available in the virtual space. And so that work will be kicked off fairly soon. For our English learners, we are also expanding our services in that space with requirements for the necessary touchpoints, the same way as exceptional education for not only their core teachers, but their support staff and other specialized services to be provided to students in the virtual space. So one example of that, going back to the exceptional education space, is our team kicked off their teletherapy over the summer. And it was very successful for our students and for our educators and support staff. And so we are expanding that into our virtual setting. So we're trying to replicate as much as possible the experiences and supports that students would have in a face-to-face environment. We also know that this is not perfect and it's not ideal. And so we're going to get there as quickly and close as we can. But both teams, exceptional education and EL, are a part of the launch of the virtual school and our platform in Schoolology, where it will be housed and to make sure that the appropriate modifications and accommodations are available. David, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Thanks, Dr. Battle, and thanks, Ms. Pupa Walker, for the question. I think it's just key to remember that all of our educators, teachers, and central office staff are committed to providing that continuum of services. So as Dr. Battle said, the key thing is going to be to provide access to that core curriculum. And that's going to be in combination, you know, with the gen ed teacher and any EL or EE teacher that needs to collaborate and provide scaffolds and modifications as appropriate. The other piece of this is that when we have our personalized learning time, those students can have their language needs met, for example, through the personalized learning time. And so again, we talked to a lot of our principals a great deal about the hours, if you will, from a policy standpoint, can be met, whether I'm in an EL co-taught class, I could be in a shelter class, and in combination with my personalized learning time that could be delivered one-on-one, small group with an educator at the appropriate time in a virtual setting. So across the board, as Dr. Battle said, with our exceptional education students and EL students, it's really about satisfying that continuum of learning across the board.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the Florida Virtual Schools contract. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. You have a motion and a second. Dr. Sevier, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Gentry.
Aye.
Dr. Gentry votes aye, Ms. Elrod.
Aye.
Ms. Elrod votes aye, Ms. Spearing.
Aye.
Ms. Spearing votes aye, Ms. Bugs.
Aye.
Ms. Bugs votes aye, Ms. Bush.
Aye.
Ms. Bush votes aye, Ms. Player Peters.
Aye.
Ms. Player Peters votes aye, Ms. Pupa Walker.
Aye.
Ms. Pupa Walker votes aye, Ms. Froak.
Aye.
Madam Chair, you have eight ayes.
All right, the motion is passed. Next, we will turn to consent agenda item A1G. Approval of Board Policies, 3.210, Naming of Facilities, 4.206, Homebound Instruction, and 6.200 Attendance. Ms. Pupa Walker.
So were those not passed in the consent agenda, butted on earlier?
I thought you pulled those three from the consent agenda. Did I misunderstand?
I was removing them altogether.
Okay, I still think we have to have a motion to dispose of them. Is that correct, Dr. Sevier?
Ms. Froak, Madam Chair, no, they were covered. She removed 3.210, 4.606, and 6.200. So you passed everything else but those, which is the appropriate posture. So I think you're good to move forward.
Another action, okay. All right, well, thank you. All right, so now we will turn to consent agenda item number two, Charter School Amended Applications.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Director Battle. Thank you for the opportunity to share the Charter Office Review Team's report on five charter amended applications submitted for review. I would also like to take a moment to thank the board members that reached out with questions. I believe we were able to answer most, if not all, of those questions. But it did prompt us where we found a couple of typos, and we were able to make those corrections on the presentation. And I believe we have a PowerPoint also. Okay. This evening, we will be presenting National Collegiate Prep, Ivy Prep Academy, KIP Southeast Nashville College Prep Elementary School, KIP Southeast Nashville College Prep Middle School, KIP Antioch College Prep High School. Next slide, please. Today's objective is for the Board of Education to determine if the five charter amended applications submitted this evening will be approved or denied. The board report is derived from the review team's consensus report, which you all received and included a breakdown of the potential budget and fiscal impact to MMPS. We will present the entire presentation and then go back and ask the board to consider and vote on each individual amended application. Next slide, please. There are three rating characteristics used in reviewing an amended charter application. The first meets standards. For an applicant to receive meet standards, a clear and realistic picture of what schools will look like when open must be presented. Partially meet standards is an applicant will receive partially meet standards if the application lacks information in two or more criteria of the rubric. Does not meet standard, if an application has substantial gaps in several areas, the applicant will receive a rating of does not meet standard. It's also important to note that the same review committee of experts were used to review the amended application and that reviewed the original application. Next slide, please. We will begin by reviewing National Collegiate Prep. You will notice the April findings and the amended July findings receive the same rating. I'm going to go through with you some of the findings from the review committee. The professional development model presented left out important detail. The recruitment plan for English-language teachers and duly-certified teachers was lacking significant elements. The instructional strategies for unique learners lack specific detail. The governing board is to have only three members at the start of school and then grow over time, which causes RETHING FORWARD to rely heavily on the proposed CMO Noble Education Initiative. It is important to note that NEI operates several schools outside the state of Tennessee and three within MMPS. However, they are turnaround schools and not a fresh, and not fresh start. Ms. Dinda is identified to represent RETHING FORWARD in overseeing the academic model implemented by NEI. While Ms. Dinda is an expert in this field, the type of oversight and how this oversight would be conducted was not included in the amended application. The applicant identified a management fee ranging from 2% to 11%. However, no explanation was provided on how the percentages would change over time or how this would change, or these changes would affect the final budget. The applicant indicated they would be hiring a total of 10 teachers in the middle school grades. However, they did not address what subjects and/or grade levels each teacher would be teaching. In the contingency budget, the applicant indicated lead teacher position would be eliminated if necessary. However, there's no plan to address how to eliminate positions, the eliminated positions would impact students receiving the needed support, given the already tight two-teacher-pupil ratio. Next slide, please. Next slide. Next, we will be looking at Ivy Prep Academy. On this slide, you will notice the April findings and the July findings receive the same rating. And I will now share with you some of the findings from the review committee. Arts and career engagement are identified as a significant part of the mission statement. But the curricular choices were lacking supporting research, but instead relied heavily on the experience of the potential CEO of the school. Instructional strategies were discussed. However, it was unclear how they were connected to supporting student outcomes. A high overview plan was provided for students with disability but lacked important detail. The applicant relied heavily on volunteers and business partners for key components for the school's success. There was no plan for locating, hiring, and retaining the appropriate licensed teacher, teaching staff, with a requirement of extra duties for no additional pay. A loan was used to, would be used to cover the startup cost, but it was not indicated how the startup loan would be paid off over the course of the charter. The applicant indicates possibly using college juniors and seniors to serve in a year-long internship to teach two classes per day. This left several unanswered questions. How will the students be vetted? How would they support and be trained to conduct classes? Who oversees creating the lesson plans? How would they be monitored or evaluated? And finally, what college partnerships have they already been established? Teacher salary estimates are in line with MMPS. However, the additional extra responsibilities make the salaries insufficient. There's no paid leader identified to lead the school's financial process. And there was a misalignment between the budget narrative and the staffing plan. Next, we will talk about KIP Southeast Nashville College Prep Elementary. You will notice on this slide, there was a change in the operations plan from the April finding until the amended July findings. I will go through looking at the sections where they did not meet standards. The plan did not provide a pathway for EL students who needed at least 60 minutes of language instruction a day. The applicant did not articulate how the service of English learners was a priority in the academic plan. More specificity was needed around the retention of EL students. The applicant provided limited evidence on how the appropriate individualized and academic support for students with disabilities would be provided for students on an alternative academic diploma pathway. Nashville KIP Elementary School demonstrated a Level V T-VOS growth that meets standards and was designated as a reward school for school year 19. However, this was only for one year. So we were not able to see a trend or establish that there was a positive trend for that particular school. And then for KIP Nashville College Prep, they did not have submitted data due to the abrupt closing of the school year for the 1920 school year. Next slide, please. On this slide, you will also notice a change in the operations plan for the April, from the April 2020 findings until the amended July findings. And I will share with you a few of the findings from the areas that they did not meet standards. few of the findings from the areas that they did not meet standard. A new academic focus was indicated for the academic plan. However, it was still high level, level and lacked important detail. The plan did not provide a pathway for EL students who needed at least 60 minutes of language instruction a day. It remained unclear how the ELA teachers will be able to plan differentiated lesson plans for various levels of English learners. The applicant provided limited evidence on how the appropriate individualized and academic support for students with disabilities would be provided for students on an alternative academic diploma pathway. Next slide, please. And finally, Kip Antioch College Prep High School. And there were two changes on this one in operations and then also in past performance. This is also the, where the, there was a copy paste typo on this particular slide. But this, this one has been corrected. While the applicant included additional information, it was high level and did not answer important questions regarding the network's new academic focus. The math progression plan for students with a disability did not provide a pathway that was sequential and aligned with students in mind. For example, if a student leaves the EE math progression, they had to complete integrated math in order to exit the exceptional educational program. The current progression model does not allow for this. A humanities pathway was indicated. That meets the state requirements for graduation. However, if a student fails two or more courses, they would be required to repeat all classes. Repeating previously passed coursework would impede students from earning credit to meet graduation requirements. Then looking at their past performance, they, they were a reward school in 2017. And while they, the current Kip High School has outperformed the district in ELA and math and on the ACT during the 17, 18, and 18, 19 school years, they also received a level one T VOS for, for both 17, 18, and 18, 19. And again, there was no data for the 18, 19, or excuse me, 19, 20 school year due to the abrupt closing. If you could go back to slide four, please. That was entitled Nashville Collegiate Prep. Back two more slides. Right there. Thank you. And we'll now turn it back over to Ms. Frog, and then also answer any questions that, that there may have been. I believe you're muted, Ms. Frog.
There you go. Can y'all hear me? Well, I want to say thank you, Mr. Thomas, for this presentation and for the work that you did this week. For those who don't know, the timeline for charter appeals approval changed this year. And so Mr. Thomas had to rush to get this presentation ready in time for our meeting tonight. So thank you for that. So first, I guess I will just call for any questions on the presentation.
I have a question. Oh, this is Frida Player Peters. So the, what's on for the Kip College Prep High School? The slide that's presented is the corrected version, not the one that was given initially?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Just want to clarify.
Uh, yes.
Any other questions or comments?
Me.
Ms. Bush. Hi, Ms. Bush.
To get on behalf of my constituents that are very excited about Kip. Kip has been in, I can only speak on the Southeast Kip and our experiences in the community. They have been a model steward in this community, and they have definitely shown parents and the students academic gains. They have definitely have, they have such, they have so much support, so much parent support. And they are, I've not, the whole time they've been here, I've not heard one complaint. I've actually heard nothing but great things, amazing things about the direction that Kip is academically supporting the students. I've had an opportunity to go to the schools several times to visit, to step into the classrooms, to be able to monitor or observe the teachers and the interaction for the, for our students. And once again, when you step into their classrooms, you just, they don't pay any attention to you because they're so involved in learning. They're excited. Their social emotion, emotional sensory is just always, the energy that they're putting into, to being at this school is just, it's just simply amazing of what I've seen. I do know that they have had, you know, some hiccups along the way with this application. And I will read to you, I know we don't have public comments tonight, but it really is important to really hear from an MMPS teacher about her experience of having her student at Kip. And this is coming from parents. And I think it's always important that we listen to our parents of what they want. And it's just important that their voices matter. She had said some of her points about Kip. She said that it is a rigorous curriculum. She said that they work hard on community and parental engagement, exposure to colleges and universities. They provide a college culture. They have high emphasis on reading. They have direct access and contact with leadership. They have high expectations on core values for students. And this was really impressive. They better, their veteran teachers pair up with their new teachers. So it really means a lot when you have one of our own to make those comments and have that kind of experience with Kip. I will tell you, right now in Southeast, it's no secret, we're growing by leaps and bounds. Development is coming very quickly. It continues to be a good thing and a bad thing for us. I will tell you, right now, we have pretty much sustained, or I guess I would say, we're not at a point with our elementary and middle schools where we're having major concerns about overcapacity because we've been able to move a lot, a lot, a lot of moving parts for our students. But I will say that I am willing to support the high school. The high school, from my understanding, will not be built until 2023. I know that budget is always a question surrounding our charter schools. And I just feel that based on the information that I have received from the two high schools that we have here, which is our Antioch and Cambridge, we're pretty much at 93% capacity. And Cambridge.
We seem to be having some technical difficulties from Ms. Bush.
Been presenting. I do feel, can you hear me? Hello? Can you see me? Can you hear me?
You, yes, you were cutting out for a minute, but you're back.
Okay, okay. Can you hear me? I can't see it going in and out.
Yes.
Okay. So based on the information as far as what I received is about our high schools, it is very, I would say concerning with the capacity, the level of capacity that we're faced with going into even this school year. And again, I would, I would, I would support the high school. And based on the information that has been presented, I do feel that they have an opportunity to definitely correct or take those recommendations from the committee and make those changes accordingly. I just really feel compelled at this point that it's almost like my back is against the wall regarding the high capacity of our students that are in our schools and how fast we're. So yes, they did do really well in their ACT scores. And 60% of their, their high school seniors went on to college. And it's a lot of, it's a lot of great things that Kip Collegiate has done. So I just wanted to make those comments and open it up to any more comments.
Thank you, Ms. Bush. Does anyone else have comments?
I do, Madam Chair.
Okay. Ms. Elrod?
So first, I want to understand, are we making our comments about each individual school at this time, since it's a vote for all applications? Or are we doing each individual school at a time?
We would need to do each individual school and vote on each individual school independently so that if they do appeal, that would be what goes to the state board.
Okay. So I will save discussion about individual schools for those votes. So my overall general question I have is, I know from in the past, and of course, has stated, that our suggestion is that charter school applications, with those reviews, that they all meet or exceed the standards in all the three major areas of whether it's academics, operations, or financial. And none of these schools do that. But this does lack what is usually included of a suggestion of to open or not to open. So is there, is that suggestion available from leadership? Do we have that somewhere that I'm not seeing?
What, what we have been tasked with doing is to go through and look at, at each application on the academic plan, the operations plan, and the financial plan, and to rate it accordingly, whether it's a partially meets, does not meet, or it does meet. And then for, and bring that to the board for, for you all to be able to discuss and to also determine whether this school would be viable for MMPS.
Okay. Um, and I think you've done. Yes?
Yeah, Rachel, and this is Melissa. I was just jumping in. One of the sort of new aspects or sort of refined aspects of the procedure was that the administration wanted to give the board all of the objective information that it needed to make its decision, but it's ultimately the board's decision on whether or not to approve a charter school.
Okay. So it would not be.
I think at this point, all right, jump in again. I think at this point, it would be obviously finishing up the discussion on generally, and then for each school, taking the objective information that you've been given and to make your decision.
Okay. Okay. I guess my, my thought was that we would have something not as pointed as just the board's decision. I mean, I know it is the board's decision, and you know, in the finality, it's the board's decision. But I thought that there was going to be some additional guidance besides just objectionally. But I am happy to make my individual comments of why I'm making those decisions. And I will do that after, when we vote for each school. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay, I do have a, some remarks to make generally. And bear with me, this is our, this is the final vote I will have on charters, which have been the primary focus of my time on the board. So, so here are my remarks. News emerged last week that local charter schools are double dipping on funding. While receiving local dollars, they have applied for and received millions of dollars from the federal paycheck protection program, which are funds meant to help small businesses that have lost money during the pandemic. These PPP loans may be wholly forgiven. Ironically, charter schools proclaim they are just public schools, not private entities, while simultaneously accepting money meant for private businesses. Charters should not be allowed to claim they are public entities to take advantage of public funding, and at the same time, claim they are private in order to take advantage of private funding. Meanwhile, U.S. Secretary of Education Betsy DeVos, who has proven her hostility toward public education, continues to divert public funds meant for public education to private use, including private schools and privately operated charters. There have been complaints that some local PTOs are able to raise more money than others, a topic that has been brought up to reflect inequities within the system, which are very real. In Nashville, a handful of PTOs have even been able to raise in the $100,000 range of extra funding. These schools are obviously few and far between in a district that serves approximately three quarters low-income students. But fundraisers of even $100,000 to $200,000 per year are still a drop in the bucket as compared to the millions of dollars charter schools are absorbing through small business funding from the federal government. The problem is that charters continue to benefit from a wealth of additional funding while simultaneously draining funds from public schools. Report after report has identified the negative fiscal impact that charter schools have on school districts. There is also evidence that charter schools are increasing school segregation. This creates greater inequities within an already inequitable school system. Charter school investors, often wealthy white businessmen who would never send their own child to a charter school, make money on charter schools through land deals, federal tax credits, and other means, while charter schools claim they are just helping children of color. When policy changes are enacted only for other people's children, we should remain wary. Profit is driving the expansion of charter schools, and unfortunately, most parents aren't aware of this. Traditional schools, which serve the district's neediest students and keep their doors open to all children every day of the year, must absorb the children who are pushed out of charter schools right before testing time each spring. Ask any public school teacher about this, because they are held responsible for the low-performing students counseled out of charters. This is unfair and unethical. And in addition, charter schools serve lesser percentages of the neediest students, including English learners and high special needs students. I understand why some parents opt for charter schools. I understand that many parents are frustrated with their neighborhood schools that have been under-resourced and segregated, both racially and societ economically for decades. These remarks have nothing to do with parents who are just trying to navigate a complex system for their children. This is on us as a board. We are responsible for creating a school system that works for all, particularly the most marginalized children. Expanding options that increase rather than decrease inequities in the district is not the solution. This board will ultimately have to make the decision whether we want to serve the few or serve the many. Randy Dowell, head of Kip, whose schools are receiving between two to five, two and $5 million in PPP funds, is upset that MMPS will not open another Kip school in the midst of the pandemic. Kip is appealing that decision tonight so that it can force open another Kip school through state authorization. This will ultimately drain more dollars from our neediest schools and students. I think what's most deserved, most disturbed me about the charter conversation for the last eight years is that it is never about the good of the whole. Charter advocates who focus, focus on competition and disruption spread fear about local public schools in order to boost their own enrollment. They also like to argue that, quote, "Charters do more with less," but nothing could be further from the truth. A true statement would be that even with all the advantages charters are granted, extra funding, cherry pick students, the ability to get rid of low-performing students right before testing time, special favors from politicians and high places, et cetera, charter schools are still not performing any better than the traditional schools they seek to replace. And while charters continue to rake in whatever dollars they can find, charter advocates like to argue that providing sufficient funds for our local neighborhood schools is, quote, "Just throwing money at the problem." Shame on them. Public schools, which continually lack adequate funding and support, are trying to run a marathon with one leg cut off. There will doubtless be those on this board and in the public who will respond, just support every type of school. But let's be clear, supporting school privatization is a choice against public education. To support vouchers and charter school expansion is to support cutting more funds from local neighborhood schools, which are already underfunded. We can't have it both ways. As with so much in this country right now, we must collectively start focusing on the common good. We either care about all children, or we are willing to sacrifice some children for others. This is about equity. I hope this board will continue to work with Dr. Battle to finally create a plan that serves all children fairly, rather than choose to privatize our system one school at a time. And that concludes my remarks.
Madam Chair, can I make a comment, please?
Yes, I'm sorry, who's that? Yes, I'm sorry, who is that? Yes, Ms. Bush.
Yes, thank you. I just want to make it clear on the board floor that I am representing my constituents in District Six, and I'm definitely not a charter advocate. I am a school board member that represents all, and I understand that there are parents that won't choice. And I will continue to represent in that direction, and I understand the charter, oh my God, I understand it, I promise. I understand budget, monetarily, how it takes away from our public funding. I, again, have to listen to my constituents, and I have got to make sure that I'm listening to all and not some when it comes to the choices of the education of their kids. So I just want to make sure that I'm really clear about that, and that, again, this is about being an advocate for my district. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bush. All right, any other comments before we turn to the individual applications?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Okay, Ms. Bush.
So are we having more discussion between, you know, after we've made the recommendations and discuss each individual?
Yes, we'll have a question in a second, and then discussion and then a vote, so.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so if y'all don't mind, just let's scroll through the applications one at a time as we take the vote, and that way everyone can see the recommend, or not the recommendations, but the, the graph for each school. Okay, so we will first take Nashville Collegiate Prep. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Spearing.
Yes, I move to deny the application for Nashville Collegiate Prep based on the presentation at today's board meeting, the board's discussion on April 28th, 2020, and again tonight, 7:14, because it does not meet the objective criteria, excuse me, established by the board and the administration. Specifically, the professional development model presented left out important details. The recruitment plan for English language learners, I'm sorry, for English language teachers and duly certified teachers was lacking significant elements. The instructional strategies for unique learners lacked specific detail. The applicant identified a management fee ranging from 2% to 11%. However, no explanation was provided on how the percentages would change over time and how these changes could affect the final budget. The applicant indicated they would be hiring a total of 10 teachers for the middle school grades. However, they did not address what subjects or grade levels each teacher would be teaching. That concludes my motion. It's a long one.
Okay, is there a second on the motion? I'll second. Okay, discussion on Nashville Collegiate Prep. Um, I, oh, go ahead, please.
Sorry, Ma, sorry, Madam Chair. So, this is Rachel Ann. So I would like to say that I, hold on, I want to make sure I have my wording correctly. That I want to make sure that I adopt all of the things that I said back on the April 28th meeting, as there were many things that I said in response to collegiate prep, and that I am concerned that, once again, they only partially meet standards for all of the requirements. And once again, as mentioned by Ms. Spearing, there are concerns about ELL unique learner plans that were lacking significant details, and the concerns about Ms. Dinda and her overseeing several academic areas when the school opens, yet her residing in Florida and there not being any details to how she's going to be in the school herself once it opens. And then, of course, the additional details about the tight teacher-to-student ratios and the lack of information on how they plan on hiring teachers and what those teachers will be teaching.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments on Nashville Collegiate Prep? I would just like to add that I also have concerns, which I've raised before, about Noble Education Initiative, which is going to be managing the school. It is a charter management company out of Florida, and as I've pointed out before, it has links with a large for-profit charter management company called Charter Schools USA. According to The Tennessean, this is a quote, NEI Executive Director Sherry Haig is, or Haage, is married to Charter Schools USA CEO John Haig or John Haage. Sherry is also a former employee at Charter Schools USA, and the two companies are headquartered nearby on the same street in Fort Lauderdale. For-profit charter management companies are prohibited from operating in Tennessee, and this seems to be an arrangement where a for-profit management company is extremely close with this particular management company, Noble Education Initiative. And so I also would like to express my reservations based on that relationship and that management. Okay, if there are no other comments, I will, there is a motion on the floor, I'm sorry, to, to, not to approve Nashville Collegiate Prep, and we will ask for a roll call vote. This is to disprove the Nashville Collegiate Prep application.
Madam Chair, I got that Ms. Spearing made the motion, but I did not catch the second.
This, uh.
It was you.
Oh, it was me, sorry. I was thinking it was Rachel Ann. No, it was me, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Elrod?
No, it was Amy.
It was me. My apologies.
Oh, it was Ms. Fro, okay.
Okay, so let's go ahead and take a roll call vote.
Dr. Gentry?
Aye.
Dr. Gentry votes aye, Ms. Elrod?
Aye.
Ms. Elrod votes aye, Ms. Spearing?
Aye.
Ms. Spearing votes aye, Ms. Bush?
Aye.
Ms. Bush votes aye, Ms. Bush?
Aye.
Ms. Bush votes aye, Ms. Player Peters?
Aye.
Ms. Player Peters votes aye, Ms. Poopa Walker?
Aye.
Ms. Poopa Walker votes aye, Ms. Fro?
Aye.
Ms. Fro votes aye. Madam Chair, you have eight ayes.
Okay, the motion passes. All right, next, can we roll to the next slide? All right, next we will take Ivy Prep Academy, and I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Spearing.
Ms. Spearing, thank you. I move to deny Ivy League Prep Academy based on the presentation at today's board meeting, this board's discussion on August 28th, 2020, and again tonight, 7:14, because it does not meet the objective criteria established by the board and administration. Specifically, instructional strategies were discussed, however, it was unclear how they were connected to support student outcomes. A high overview plan was provided for students with a disability but lacked important details. There is no plan for locating, hiring, or retaining the appropriate licensed teaching staff with the requirement of extra duties for no additional pay. A loan will be used to cover startup costs, but it wasn't indicated how the startup loan will be repaid over the course of the charter. The applicant indicates possibly using college juniors and seniors to serve in year-long internships to teach two classes per day. However, this left several unanswered questions. How will the students be vetted? How will they support and train? How will they be supported and trained to conduct classes? Who oversees creating the lesson plans? How will they be monitored and evaluated? And what college partnerships they already have developed? That concludes my motion, ma'am.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion to deny the Ivy Prep Academy application. Do we have a second? Second? Ms. Elrod seconded. Okay, motion seconds on the floor. Dr. Sevier, would you take a roll call vote, please?
I have a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Yeah. That's okay, discussion. So I, once again, want to move, I ask that we adopt my comments that were made on April 28th, as there were many, and some of these may overlap what Jill said, but I am concerned about the lack of detail for students with disabilities, the additional responsibilities that are required of teachers without any additional pay, and then very concerned about interning students, College Day students, to conduct classes along with the undetermined pool of volunteers from within the community to teach our, to teach students. Additionally, from the past, they agree that there is no, there was a decline in middle school enrollment, which is why they were, we were concerned that they might not meet their enrollment projections, which I know we hadn't mentioned today, but I want to bring that back up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Elrod. Any more discussion? Okay, Dr. Sevier, would you please do a roll call vote?
Dr. Gentry?
Aye.
Dr. Gentry votes aye, Ms. Elrod?
Aye.
Ms. Elrod votes aye, Ms. Spearing?
Aye.
Ms. Spearing votes aye, Ms. Bush?
Aye.
Ms. Bush votes aye, Ms. Bush?
Aye.
Ms. Bush votes aye, Ms. Player Peters?
Aye.
Ms. Player Peters votes aye, Ms. Fro?
Aye.
Oh, pardon me, Ms. Poopa Walker?
Aye.
Ms. Poopa Walker votes aye, Ms. Fro?
Okay, the motion to deny Ivy Prep Academy is approved. If we could roll to the next slide, please. Okay, KIP Southeast Nashville College Prep Elementary School. I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Spearing.
I move to deny the application for KIP Southeast Nashville College Prep Elementary School based on the presentation at today's board meeting, this board's discussion on April 28th, 2020, and again tonight on 7:14, because it does not meet the objective criteria established by the board and administration. Specifically, the applicant did not articulate how the service of English language learners was a priority in the academic plan. More specific information is needed about the retention of EL students. The applicant provided limited evidence on how the appropriate individualized and academic support for students with disabilities would be provided for students on an alternative academic diploma pathway. KIP Nashville College Prep Elementary will not have summative data due to the abrupt closing of the school year 2019-2020. That concludes my motion.
Okay, we have a motion to deny the application for KIP Southeast Nashville College Prep Elementary School. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Elrod has seconded. Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Ms. Elrod.
So I, once again, would like us to adopt my comments from April 28th, as there were many, and to add to that, I am concerned, some of this will, once again, overlap probably what Jill said. I am concerned about the proposed RTI process and the program, as it's unclear and does not meet the needs of our ELL students, which is the needing 60 minutes a day. Their new academic focus was listed, but there was no pathway for EL students, and there were otherwise limited details, and then just an overall lack of details in general. Additionally, I am concerned about how we have stated that they have some experience opening schools. However, this does not include information about how they have also been closing schools in Memphis. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, Dr. Sevier, we will call for a vote on the motion to deny KIP Southeast Nashville College Prep Elementary School.
Dr. Gentry?
Aye.
Dr. Gentry votes aye, Ms. Elrod?
Aye.
Ms. Elrod votes aye, Ms. Spearing?
Aye.
Ms. Spearing votes aye, Ms. Bush?
Aye.
Ms. Bush votes aye, Ms. Bush?
No.
Ms. Bush votes no. Ms. Player Peters?
Aye.
Ms. Player Peters votes aye. Ms. Poopa Walker?
Aye.
Ms. Poopa Walker votes aye, Ms. Fro?
All right, the motion to deny KIP Southeast Nashville College Prep Elementary School is approved.
Ms. Fro, I need to record your vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, I've done that twice. Aye.
Ms. Fro votes aye. Madam Chair, you have seven ayes, one nay.
Okay, thank you. This motion has been denied. I mean, has been approved, I'm sorry. So we have denied the KIP Southeast Nashville College Prep Elementary School application. All right, if we'll roll to the next slide, please. Okay, KIP Southeast Nashville College Prep Middle School.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Spearing.
I move to deny the application for KIP Southeast Nashville College Prep Middle School based on the presentation at today's board meeting, this board's discussion on April 28th, 2020, and again tonight, 7:14:20, because it does not meet the objective criteria established by the board and the administration. Specifically, a new academic focus was indicated in the academic plan, however, it was still high-level and lacked important details. The plan did not provide a pathway for EL students who need at least 60 minutes of language instruction a day. More specific information is needed about the retention of EL students. It remained unclear how ELA teachers will be able to plan differentiated lessons for various levels of English learners. And finally, the applicant provided limited evidence on how the appropriate individualized and academic support for students with disabilities would be provided for students on an alternate academic diploma pathway.
Okay.
That concludes my motion. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to deny KIP Southeast Nashville College Prep Middle School. Do we have a second?
Second, this is Rachel Ann.
Okay, discussion.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Elrod.
I would like to move that we adopt all of my comments from the April 28th meeting, and overall, I'm concerned about their lack of details, even down to the community that they are going to be serving. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Okay, I will call for a vote on KIP Southeast Nashville College Prep Middle School. Dr. Sevier?
Dr. Gentry?
Aye.
Dr. Gentry votes aye, Ms. Spearing? Pardon me, Ms. Elrod?
Aye.
Ms. Elrod votes aye, Ms. Spearing?
Aye.
Ms. Elrod votes aye, Ms. Bush?
Aye.
Ms. Bush votes aye, Ms. Bush?
No.
Ms. Bush votes nay. Ms. Player Peters?
Aye.
Ms. Player Peters votes aye. Ms. Poopa Walker?
Aye.
Ms. Poopa Walker votes aye, Ms. Fro?
Aye.
Ms. Fro votes aye. Madam Chair, you have seven ayes, one nay.
The motion to deny Southeast Nashville College Prep Middle School is approved. And the next slide, please. Okay, KIP Antioch College Prep High School. I'll entertain a motion.
I have a motion, Ms. Fro.
Okay, Ms. Bush?
I move that we deny the KIP Antioch College Prep High School application due to consistent low-budget allocations at the state and local levels, and for the potentially negative fiscal impact based on COVID-related budget implications and low state and local revenue projections.
Okay, we have a motion to deny. Do we have a second?
Second.
This is Rachel Ann. Ms. Elrod seconded. Okay, discussion.
If you don't mind, I'll start with some remarks.
Yes, fine.
So I've, I've always kind of been frustrated by the way we talk about, about these applications, because we, we never seem to move past the idea of our individual views of charter schools to really talk about inequity around the district. We had, we still have not had that conversation. We, as a board, have not historically voted in ways that really support equity, and our discussions reflect that also. And so I, and I, I think, I think it's a, I appreciate that Ms. Bush is looking to do something to support her community, that it's based on what parent feedback and, and what students, you know, want or are asking for, but we also can acknowledge that we just do not have the money right now for another school, especially with COVID and with the idea that we consistently are underfunded at every level. But I think it's just inappropriate for us to keep. But I think it's just inappropriate for us to keep talking negatively about people versus ideas. I mean, we just keep saying people's names and saying things that are just wildly inappropriate and in many cases really wrong. I mean, we had that happen last year, talking about some of our nonprofit leaders, and, and it turned out that we were lying on the board floor. So I want us to be just really mindful of the way we treat people, especially with everything happening around the country. I think it's, it's fine to talk about why we cannot stand for another school, that we just don't have the fiscal capacity for one. But once we start dragging people into it, I just, I just have to denounce that publicly. But even aside from all of that, the idea that we have already dedicated what few fiscal dollars we're gonna get, what few facility, I'm sorry, what few facility dollars we're gonna get over likely the next decade, and they've all been dedicated to one brand-new school. And so it's, it's unfortunate that Antioch, where we know we have the highest population of students, where we don't even have money to try to fund one out there, and that is just inequitable. And we're continuing to, to make that happen. But I spoke with Mr. Dowell today and, you know, let him know that, that we appreciate, I appreciate any educator. I love that there are community members and groups working to support our students, but that I still cannot support another building, another charter school, because we don't have the money to meet the demand. But I think we, as a board, need to move beyond just talking about what we don't want and talk about what we do want, which is equity, or at least some equity measures, a more equitable distribution of resources. If we're doling out new buildings, if we're putting $100-plus million in community, let's make, in communities, let's make sure it's in places that really need them. And then we can come back around to what our deepest hearts desires are. So I just, I want to make it clear that with, with our budget situation, with the idea that we've already had projections that say over the course of the next several years, we likely won't have the funding at the city or state level to receive the kind of funding that we need to adequately and equitably support all of our students. But I, I just, there's just so, so many different thoughts, but I'll leave that there for now. Thank you.
Ms. Spearing, and then Ms. Bush, and then Ms. Elrod.
Thank you. Thank, thank you, Ms. Frog. The original intention of charter schools was to work with the public school districts in order to support all students. And children who are not successful in district schools were, the hope was that charter schools would work with the district schools to help those children succeed. It is a completely different ballgame today. Now, the charter schools compete with, with the, with the district schools, and they often disparage the public schools. So I just wanted to make that point, Ms. Frog. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Spearing. Ms. Bush?
I was on mute.
Okay. Okay, go ahead. We cannot hear you. Ms. Bush? I think you're still on mute, and it was, you're having some technical difficulties there. Did we go to Ms. Elrod and come back? Or do, can you hit unmute?
There I am. Okay, I wasn't on mute, but my system went there. Can you hear me?
Okay.
All right, so I just wanted to make a couple of comments. You know, I've been, when I first got on the board, the first thing I said is that we needed more schools in Antioch, in, in Antioch and Cambridge. That's when we had first built Lakeview. And as soon as I met David Prophet and his team, the first thing I said when I met them is that we need another middle school. So now we have gotten approved for land out here for a middle school. But of course, it's gonna take years for us to even start the process of building. And this is when it becomes a disadvantage for this community. And it has been, it, in, in its... To the parents, their taxpayer, they pay their taxes, and yet we're not giving them what, what their needs are for their, for our students. Yeah, we know that charters drain part of our, our budget. There's no question about that. There's never been a question about that. It's always been a question about how do we solve, resolve our issues with capacity and making sure that our students are getting, all students are getting the support they need. And I definitely hear my constituents. I hear their cries. And these students and parents, especially EL's parents, they're very involved, and they are paying attention. And we should never doubt their education level and, and their, their cares for their students. So they're definitely very much so involved. You know, I always, you know, try to be very fair when it comes to options for our kids. And when parents are saying they want options, they want options. It doesn't mean that we, that, that someone's pro, pro-charter. It is saying that parents saying that they want more. They want other options. And that's exactly what my position has been all of this time. So I hear how we want so much to bridge the gap in this community, because we are growing. And we gotta start looking at some solutions to this problem that we're having out here. And the only reason why I was even considering the high school is because I understand and I get it right now where our numbers lie. So in two to three years, where are we gonna be with our numbers? Where are we gonna be? We're already, like I said, 93% at capacity at, at Antioch, Cambridge at 109%. So can we project and predict where we're gonna be at the next two or three years with our high schools? Are we gonna put more portables out there? Are we gonna build a portable city for our kids? Is that what we're looking at? So it's about partnership. It's about working together with MNPS. And I think Randy Dowell has really tried to do that. I'm not saying he's perfect, but what I'm saying is, is that he's been in this community, the Nashville community, I can only speak for Nashville, for about 15 years. And I think he's tried to be a good steward and working with his board. So I just wanted to make sure that I publicly stated where my, where I stand with this. And that's the reason why we're in the situation we're in. And basically, I am, I'm asking for help. I'm asking for these students and teachers and parents to have some solution to the growing problem that we have in Southeast Davidson County. That's all I need, that's all I need to say about that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bush. Ms. Elrod?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So I guess in response to those comments, I, I first want to make sure that I at least say for myself, but I feel pretty confident for saying on behalf of my colleagues on the board, that nobody doubts the education level of our EL student parents. My concerns about there not being EL supports inside several of these schools is not based upon a parent ability or inability to decide that for themselves. It's based upon the descriptions that the schools have provided. Once again, not based upon if I think a parent is advised enough or educated enough to make that decision for themselves. Additionally, I think it should be said that land for Antioch Middle School was being looked at before Ms. Bush brought that up, but I am very glad that it's being found as it is absolutely needed, but was exceptionally difficult to find. To Ms. Bugs' point about the financial impact and the fiscal impact that we've had, and that's being a main reason of why we cannot open these schools, to that point, I want to make sure that it is known or that we remind everybody that the fiscal impact information was included. I really appreciate that from leadership. It's on page 93, or 193, 194, and 195. I want to call attention to that. Is it something that I've been asking for a lot, and I really appreciate it, specifically to Kip Antioch College Prep? And I'm sorry if you see me scrolling back and forth when I'm looking between the camera on my computer and my notes, and of course, our JDO paperwork, which is more difficult to do on a computer than in person, I have to say. So for Kip Antioch College Prep High School, the projected budget expense would be $9,960,000 per year. And the, the other ones that we had talked about for net fiscal impact, the net fiscal impact would be about $4.3 million a year. Southeast Nashville College Prep Middle School, that budget expense was gonna be $3.8 million a year with a net fiscal impact of 1.4. Nashville Southeast College Prep was gonna be for a budget expense of $6.48 million a year with a net fiscal impact of 2.27. And Ivy Prep was gonna be a budget expense of $3.1 a year with a net fiscal impact of about $770,000 a year. And then lastly, Collegiate Prep was a budget expense of $8.3 million a year with a net fiscal impact of 2.89 a year. Obviously, these fiscal impacts and this budget impact information is important for us to have so that we can make educated and objectional decisions based upon that fiscal impact of these schools. And so I am glad that Ms. Bugs brought that up, because it is something that we should definitely consider, not only for Kip Antioch College Prep, but for all of the charter schools before us. Specifically for Kip Antioch, once again, I apologize for having to toggle between my screens for my notes. My concerns with the Kip Antioch, Kip Antioch College Prep was that there was just an overall lack of details from their graduation pathway and how to obtain highly qualified teachers. And as always, I want to make sure that my notes from April 28th are adopted, as there were many in general. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elrod. I just wanted to respond to one comment about nonprofits last year, because I think it was directed at me. I just want to say, it is our job as board members to question the expenditure of tax dollars. We are tasked with being watchdogs of public funds. And frankly, I can't remember all the details of that conversation last year, but I did not lie on the board floor. I have never outright lied on the board floor. I did ask a lot of questions about where dollars were going with our nonprofits. And I am gonna continue to ask those questions for the next month that I'm on the board about contracts, expenditures, whether our MNPS dollars are being effectively spent. I think that's an important job for a board member to do, and I hope that other board members will do that as well. Are there any more comments on Kip Antioch College Prep High School before we take a vote? Ms. Spearing?
Madam Chair, thank you. I, I just want to remind us that the Kip present high school, they did outperform the district in ELA and math, and even on the ACT during 17, 18, and 18, 19. However, they only scored at a 1 T-VAS for those same two years, which makes me wonder, are they creaming off the district? Are they taking the top-performing students and yet not making a year's growth? That's just my concern. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one comment. I just have one comment. Oh, I have a question. How do we, how do we score on our T-VAS the past two years in Metro? I'm just curious. Does anybody know?
This is David. I don't know if Dr. Changius is on the line. Ms. Bush, obviously, we didn't have our teen-ready results from the spring.
Yes, that's one, yes.
So the year before, for our 18, 19 school year, we were a composite five for the district in numeracy or mathematics, and we were a composite four for T-VAS for the district in, in ELA.
All right, thank you.
All right, any other comments? And I am...
I'll make, I just want to say something really briefly.
Ms. Cooper Walker?
I just want, I made some remarks at our last board meeting. I just want to say that I have tremendous respect for Randy Dowell and for his staff and for his students and for the tremendous work they've done in our community. And, you know, my decision here today is based on finances and not on, on, certainly on the merits of the application itself, I think, for the most part. I mean, obviously, every school can have room for improvement. I don't believe they're creaming the best students. I've been in Kip schools. It's an extremely diverse student body with lots and lots of different types of kids. And I really believe that they are performing an important function for our city. But I do believe that at this time, it's, it poses a financial burden on us that we can't manage right now. But I do want to say that I appreciate all that Kip has done in Nashville for many, many years. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Gentry.
Thank you, Ms. Frog, and, you know, just everything that's already been said. Plus, you know, the, the challenge here, and it's been stated before, right? Our responsibility is to be good stewards of the resources that we have. And so we make hard decisions all the time, and we can't, you know, deviate from, from that responsibility at will. But the, the sad and more unfortunate fact of the matter, and Ms. Spearing actually alluded to this in her comments, is that the, the way the state has arranged this process and the way it works, there's two things that are for certain. Number one, the, the introduction of charter schools into our districts is not done in the spirit of partnership. It just isn't. So the vote that we take here tonight, we all know that there is a process that, that was developed at the state several years ago to be able to circumvent this. And so, you know, even in my conversations with Randy, I told him, I said, it's just, it's blatant disrespect in pandering to even have a... Because regardless, the state has made it possible for charter authorizers to go directly to them, or after leaving us, go directly to them and get their, their proposals approved. And so this fiscal challenge remains for us in spite of our best efforts. The, if, if this was truly a partnership, you know, we wouldn't be hamstringing into 10-year deals so that we would have the opportunity to address our challenge, our challenges of space, address our challenges of, of academic performance. So not only are we, we tied into this relationship for 10 years, that's for 10 years, that $9 million turns into, you know, a little over $10 million next year as the cost for educating our students continues to increase. And so it's just unfortunate that the process... To help address the challenges of the district, which was the original intent. And so here's where we are. We will still have to have a conversation about what we do when that, that bill hits, because it's gonna hit. Again, because the state has made it possible for our vote and our responsibility of managing the resources of the district to just be completely undermined. And that makes it difficult for, to view this as a partnership. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gentry. I'll just add, I agree, and I realized when I was elected to the board in 2012 is that I had walked into probably a decade of the state laying groundwork for charter schools, which was going to create an inequitable outcome for districts. The, unfortunately, the way state law is, is crafted, charter schools always come first. We've now lost local control, so we are in a difficult situation. But we do have a vehicle that we could use that, that, where we can, that will help us focus on equity for the district, and that is MNPS Reimagined. It's the, the initiative that Dr. Battles put together. And I think the more that we can begin to address inequities within our existing schools, the more we can pump resources in for the children who have the highest needs, the more we can generate excitement about what's happening at our schools, the less we'll have to have the privatization conversation. So I am hopeful that we might actually begin to do this work. I will not be here, but, you know, this, this board has a really great opportunity to change things for the better for our district. So that's all I've got, and I will, go ahead. Unless there's any further discussion, I'll call for a vote. And so, Ms. Bush? Okay, go ahead.
So, yeah, I'm glad you brought up the, the state portion of this, or the, the state's involvement in the next steps, Dr. Gentry, just because I think we need to be prepared as a board to actually start engaging the state board and the State Department of Education. I don't think we typically do, at least not officially. We tend to just, you know, go to the state legislature, so I think we need to, it's a, it's a both-and situation. We need to work with both. But I do want to take this time, if you don't mind, to acknowledge all the many community groups that are helping us make it through COVID and helping us as we transition to virtual learning. Organizations like Pencil Foundation headed by Angie Adams, we appreciate you and all the work you've done for our students of supporting meal distribution. And of course, the Nashville Public Education Foundation that is now headed by Katie Core, formerly headed by Shannon Hunt, who always donate and invest in MNPS and never ask for a cent. So thank you to groups, to those two groups and other groups like them. We appreciate you.
Okay, Ms. Bush?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Ms. Frog, I definitely appreciate your comments about equity, and it is so important, and I keep repeating... it is so important, and I keep repeating this over and over again, that we have to do something to help the fastest-growing area in this, in this, in this city and in our district. We need the support, and we need it now. And I understand right now financially, we're not in that situation that we can move faster and that we, you know, have to take these baby steps. But I will tell you, we have to start focusing on really where the high needs are. And I will continue to advocate and I will continue to be a voice for these parents that want more and they want, they want options. And unfortunately, you know, they, they're stuck right now, you know, with Kip Elementary, Middle School, the combination of, on their waiting list right now is 900 students. That's, that's huge. It's almost like another school. And that tells you because, you know, we, we're extending ourselves in, in all capacity of our schools, elementary, middle, and now high school. So if we can start bridging those gaps, then the need of having more charters in southeast Davidson County, we will, we will not be having this conversation. So I just wanted to make that statement. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bush. Okay, any further discussion? All right. So we are voting on a motion to deny Kip Antioch College Prep High School. Dr. Sevier, I mean, Dr. Sevier.
Dr. Gentry.
Aye.
Gentry votes aye. Ms. Elrod?
Aye.
Ms. Elrod votes aye. Ms. Spearing?
Aye.
Spearing votes aye. And Ms. Bugs?
Aye.
Ms. Bugs votes aye. Ms. Bush?
No.
Ms. Bush votes nay. Ms. Player Peters?
Aye.
Ms. Player Peters votes aye. Ms. Cooper Walker?
Aye.
Ms. Cooper Walker votes aye. And Ms. Frog?
Aye.
Ms. Frog votes aye. Madam Chair, you have seven ayes, one nay.
Okay, the motion to deny is approved. All right. So now we are going to turn to the Director's Report on the reopening of schools update, and I will let Dr. Battle take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Let's see if we can pull up the Director's Report PowerPoint. Thank you. Is it possible for us to make it a little bit bigger? There we go. Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members. We have been purposeful in the design of the district's continuity of learning plan to ensure that we are accelerating learning for all students, supporting teachers, and engaging families in authentic ways. The choices have been made with equity of access and instruction in mind. Our goals exceeds the minimum expectations set forth by the Tennessee Department of Education because we are committed to helping all students achieving academic outcomes and SCL milestones. The following slides will outline our 12 priorities that we have used to organize our planning. Each priority represents an area of focus for the district that will be used to measure our effectiveness and hold us accountable. Next slide, please. Our goal remains consistent in planning for and executing upon a safe return to the school year and accelerating learning opportunities for students. We have already created a website that will serve as a hub for critical reopening and back-to-school content. That, that hub and that site is www.mnps.org/backtoschool. Next slide, please. Of course, we have all been very optimistic that Nashville was going to be moving forward with a phased reopening plan that would allow a return to a sense of normalcy and the safe reopening of schools. However, in recent days and weeks, we have seen that COVID-19 appears to be getting worse and not better here locally. We know that we have an increase in our transmission rate. We know that our governor has extended the state of emergency. We're now under mandatory mask order, and the mayor has moved us back to phase two of our reopening plan. And you likely saw just today that we have experienced our highest number of positive cases with 771 in the past 24 hours. Next slide, please. Therefore, as was communicated and announced last week, MNPS will be opening the 2020-21 school year with virtual learning for the first month of school. However, it is to be understood that we are prepared for an in-person reopening as soon as conditions allow us to do so. So we are fully prepared and ready to go as soon as conditions allow us to be in a face-to-face environment. One point of emphasis here that I want to point out is that our virtual learning environment will look much different than remote learning 2.0. On the screen there, you see some of the significant differences between remote learning and virtual learning. In the virtual learning environment, we will have assessments, accountability, attendance will be taken. We will be providing timely teacher feedback. We will be utilizing a standard curriculum to be used across the district, which allows teachers to focus on supporting students versus spending time designing virtual lessons. We will also provide asynchronous learning modules and opportunities for students in the virtual environment. And we will more clearly be defining roles and expectations for all MNPS staff. Next slide, please. Our work is built on three principles. Students deserve a consistent quality education regardless of the delivery model, so whether that be virtual or face-to-face. We want our students, we want to be able to assess all student learning needs. Teachers must provide some asynchronous learning opportunities throughout the week of each course. And schools and families must be provided flexibility to continue learning through a combination of synchronous and asynchronous opportunities. Next slide, please. Additionally, we have planned for, again, those asynchronous opportunities for students to self-paced their learning and to provide teachers with greater flexibility, synchronous opportunities to ensure timely teacher feedback, community building with students and teachers, and to replicate in-person classroom experiences. Again, there's no perfect solution, but we want to replicate as closely as we can the face-to-face experience for students. We have planned for five hours of teacher planning per week with one hour of common planning with colleagues at minimum. And we have increased SCL support via Navigator staff who will provide additional supports for students through regular SCL touchpoints. On the next slide, you will notice one additional adjustment we are making with regards to scheduling for high schoolers. For the last several years, MNPS' zone high schools have utilized an A-B block schedule for students where they take four classes on a A day and four other classes on a B day, allowing students to earn up to eight credits over the course of the year. As we prepare for a virtual launch to begin school, it is important to consider the demands on students, teachers, and families of managing eight classes virtually. This school year, MNPS' zone high schools will be switching to a four-by-four schedule where they will take and generally complete four classes during the fall semester and four other classes during the spring semester. This way, there will generally only be four classes to manage at a time. There are some considerations for special programs. This approach will allow our students to continue to earn up to eight credits this year towards their graduation requirements. Next slide, please. We have been purposeful in the design of the district's continuity of learning plan to ensure that we are accelerating learning for all students, supporting teachers and engaging families, again, in authentic ways. The following slides outline 12 priorities, again, that we have used to organize our planning. Each priority represents an area of focus for the district that will help measure our effectiveness and hold us accountable, as I mentioned earlier. Next slide. So what you will see on this slide is that we've broken ourselves up into what we're calling our unified vision for virtual teaching and learning. We have three workgroups. Our three workgroups that have been comprised of various stakeholders, they have been creating detailed plans with outcomes and strategies for execution and implementation. We have leveraged high-yield priorities that are grounded in equity of access and district accountability, and that leads us into our continuity of learning plan. Our district's plan that outlines how to create systems of support for students and teachers that are focused on accelerating learning for all students. So let's talk about Priority One. Again, we have 12 priorities. Next slide, please. Priority One is curriculum and instruction. Our focus here has been critical, critical around providing rigorous and engaging digital curriculum content for grades pre-K through 12. As I mentioned earlier, leveraging the online curriculum for all students. Grading and assessment guides and calendars for educators. The guides will outline the technical aspects of creating and deploying assessments and gradebook management within Schoology. We're also focused on digital curriculum content introductory series for educators organized by tiers. So for example, pre-K, elementary, middle, and high school, as well as by content areas. So for example, English, math, science, social studies, et cetera. We're also focused on building digital instructional, a digital instructional toolkit for pre-K educators and executive principals outlining the digital curriculum, instructional unit plans, focus standards, virtual screeners and progress monitoring, professional development sequences, student-staff workday schedules, communication plans, as well as additional resources. We are literally, literally trying to think of everything. We have developed an attendance plan to allow flexibility for families while ensuring students are engaging with their teachers and their content. On the next slide, you will see Priority Two, which is professional development and learning support. Professional development and learning support is critical to the success of our continuity of learning plan. We will be providing a PD catalog of training, trainings of staff, for staff, including digital instruction strategies, technology integration, and support for staff, students, and families. We will also be launching a digital instruction website for educators, which will serve as a hub for information, professional learning, instructional tools, resources, technology support to complement our technology distribution and one-to-one device deployment plan. Priority Three on the next slide is around instructional technology. Our instructional technology team is creating, excuse me, currently finalizing our technology distribution and connectivity plan via school-based planning. In addition, they are finalizing our student gradebook information with transitions between Schoology and Infinite Campus, utilization of family interviews and surveys to determine outreach, support, and technology needs, as well as expanding our technology help desk to address and resolve technical difficulties and challenges. On the next slide, I wanted to unpack, unpack a little bit more our tech and materials distribution plan. There is a large technology gap at MNPS between students who have access to their own computer devices and those who do not. We're going to close that gap by preparing devices at all of our schools and distributing them to students who need them. At the end of the 2019-20 school year, teachers and school staff survey parents to find out their technology needs. We'll be asking schools to follow back up with those families who are reaching out to families who were not surveyed earlier this year to determine if they still need a device or internet access. Those will be provided from the schools, as well as through bus routes for families that do not have access to transportation. We're kindly asking those students or families with reliable access to their own computers to wait during the first round, but we have computers on order to make MNPS a one-to-one technology district. Microsoft Windows devices are preferred, but Macs, Chromebooks, and most tablets will also work in the Schoology platform. One last note, we are in the process of finalizing how-to guides for stakeholders. We also have expanded our IT troubleshooting supports for, for students and for employees. As we prepare for August 4th and throughout the school year, we'll continue to deliver professional development to ensure that all MNPS teachers and support staff, students and parents are prepared, not only for virtual teaching and learning, but also to provide social-emotional learning supports we know our students will need. So for example, SCL in a virtual learning environment is a new professional development that we created for teachers to focus on integrating mindfulness, self-awareness, and building relationships with students in a virtual setting. Distance Doesn't Mean Disengage is another PD that discusses ways to create authentic family partnerships, recognizing that families are critical levers to student success. We've also created a Schoology Live event that helps teachers learn about the Schoology Virtual Learning and Management System while they use it. We have a session to train teachers in using the Flipgrid platform as well, and there's one for using accessibility tools to help meet the needs of diverse learners, as I mentioned earlier today. Those are just a few examples out of dozens. All of these professional trainings and many, many more will be central to our success in this new environment this year. Next slide, please. You will notice a, that this is a sample action plan on this side. These plans include action steps, desired outcomes, person responsible, and end dates. Our teams are creating cross-collaborative plans to meet our desired outcomes, and I will continue to provide updates of these action plans and status updates for your information. Next slide, please. Priority Four is exceptional education. For each child with disabilities, we are developing a COVID-19 Continuous Learning Individual Plan, or ACLIP. The CLIP will identify how MNPS intends to implement the services and supports that our students with IEPs or Section 504 plans need for successfully engaging in virtual learning. The district will ensure classroom teachers and EE teachers virtually collaborate and co-plan between content and other teachers and supporting all learners to provide accommodations, modifications, accessibility, and equity for students with disabilities. On the next slide, you will notice that we're going to focus on Priority Five, which is English learner and English language development. Our goal is to ensure that a minimum of one hour per day will be provided for English language services for every active ELD student. Classroom teachers and English language teachers will collaborate virtually and co-plan between content areas and other teachers in supporting and providing accommodations, modifications, accessibility, and again, equity for all learners. Identification and screening for all non-English language background students will continue at enrollment sites. So we already have sites set up in a safe, secure manner for those assessments to take place now and to be ongoing. Consistent communication with students and families through translation and interpretation services will continue, using home language letters, callouts, websites, social media tools, and by leveraging our community partners. Virtual synchronous instructional sessions and live feedback, in addition to recorded sessions for students needing asynchronous instructional sessions, will be provided for students with interrupted formal education, which are our SCIF students, our English Language Development, ELD students, and our English Language Arts students as well in ELA. Priority Six is family engagement. Our support workgroup has been laser-focused on building comprehensive family engagement plans as we know how critical our parents, guardians, and caregivers are to the success of our students. They are planning and implementing some of the following strategies. Launching a digital learning website for students, which will serve as a hub for digital learning, learning support strategies, tools, and resources. Digital learning guides for students and families outlining academic competencies, expectations, responsibilities, core values, et cetera. Designing and delivering a family engagement series on supporting virtual learners. Developing and distributing a monthly focus on providing up-to-date information, learning support strategies for all. Designing and deploying a social-emotional learning, SCL-centered phone call script for educators to utilize will make an initial contact with students and families. Developing and sharing a family feedback framework for schools to utilize towards capturing family feedback for continuous improvement, as well as many, many other innovative strategies. On the next slide, you will see how we're prioritizing SCL supports for all. And when we say all, we mean all students, all families, and all staff. It is important for us to recognize as a district the social-emotional learning needs for all stakeholders to be successful in this virtual learning space and moving forward. So we've identified some high-leverage strategies that we will be utilizing to support all learners from day one. On the next slide, you'll see Priority Seven, which is assessment and evaluation. With regards to Priority Seven, we are planning and executing upon selecting and implementing a universal screening and progress monitoring program that can be executed remotely, deploying the Tennessee Department of Education's optional formative assessments, and developing, developing and deploying online training for utilizing these resources, and developing and implementing a plan to implement fall end-of-course exams. The next slide focuses on Priority Eight, extracurricular sports and arts. We continue to engage... We continue to engage with and are updating our plans in accordance to various guidance documents for extracurricular sports from TSSAA in alignment with our reopening plan. We have and will continue to communicate sports workout, conditioning, and practice guidance aligned to MNHD and TSSAA protocols. Communicate with band regarding band practice and performing arts practice aligned to the National Theater Practice Standards and MNHD protocols. And we are still in the process of determining and finalizing middle school sports programming, as it is still early in the cycle and have yet to, and we've yet to receive guidance for preparation. Priority nine is focused on human resources. Human resources will support reopening schools and virtual learning by creating digital learning expectations for all staff and PD protocols that include sign-in and tracking. In addition, HR will be designing a guide to help in the decision-making process involving confirmed or suspected COVID-19 cases, and supporting our employees who fall in the highest risk categories. Priority 10 is focused on internal and external assets. In terms of internal and external assets, a digital instruction guide again will be developed for principals and non-English speaking families. They can expect reopening communications to be translated in their home language. Furthermore, our MNPS staff have and will be surveyed so that we will learn how comfortable they feel returning to work and any supports they need. Our wonderful community has stepped up to find new ways to support our families during this public health crisis. United for Hope is leading the effort to unite churches and civic organizations to offer childcare for our families. The Adventure Science Center is joining their efforts. Additionally, we notified our teachers and employees about the Essential Workers' Childcare Program, the Tennessee Department of Human Services established during COVID-19, which currently ends on August 15th, and we've already contacted and are advocating with the state to extend this support. Priority eleven, focus, priority 11 focused on facilities. The safety of our facilities is of the utmost importance. We will provide guidelines for everyone entering our buildings, staff, visitors, and vendors. In turn, we will give, be, give clear social distancing guidelines and provide educators a guidance document on cleaning and disinfecting shared classroom materials, plus a daily checklist to ensure personal protective equipment and cleaning supplies. Priority 12 is focused on personal protective equipment. We are extremely committed to ensuring we have PPE in our facilities, which includes masks, gloves, disinfectant, sanitizer, face shields, sneeze guards, et cetera. We are auditing PPE materials, storing purchased and donated items in a central, centralized location, and will distribute personal protective equipment, or PPE supplies, to schools to meet student and staff and future protective needs. So next slide, to be clear, we are prepared to offer PPE to all staff and students when conditions allow for a safe in-person reopening. And what you see on the screen is just again, a highlight of the PPE equipment that we already have in hand, or that is already ordered and on the way to MNPS. And in my final slide here, I just wanted to note that we'll also be greatly expanding the services we offer as a district compared to the end of the 2019-20 environment. We want to make sure every staff member has the ability to contribute to the betterment of the students, families, and staff we surveyed at MNPS. We intend to open all of our cafeterias, even while schools are closed, in order to prepare grab and go meals that will be offered at the school or through regular bus routes. There will be challenges and limitations due to federal and state guidelines, but we intend to be creative and innovative in making sure as many students as possible have access to the nutrition we provide daily throughout the school year. So with that, Madam Chair, I will turn it back over to you.
Well, I just made some really good remarks that you didn't hear. So I was going to say thank you, Dr. Battle, because I know that this plan has taken an immense amount of planning and effort and thoughtful execution and engagement of stakeholders, and I really appreciate all of your work this summer and also this presentation. I know we're going to have quite a few questions, so I'll just open up the floor for comments Ms. Fearing.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Thank you so much for this presentation, and I just want to say a special thanks for getting this PowerPoint to us last week so that we had plenty of opportunities to peruse it before the board meeting. Thank you, that means a lot. You mentioned that there are five hours of teacher planning per week and one hour of common planning. Is the one hour of common planning included in the five hours?
So yes, and so what I'm communicating there is the minimum expectations. We want to make sure that we are in alignment with our MOU with regards to planning next, for next school year, kicking off the year. And so what we've established is minimum expectations, because we definitely want to protect our teachers and our educators and our support staff planning time as they prepare for the virtual space. So those are minimum expectations, and that one hour is included in, in that expectation.
Thank you. And I'm thinking about students who come from larger families. Let's, a scenario of maybe four students in a family. If those students needed more than one device, that would possibly be available?
Absolutely. So as we're waiting on the new devices to arrive, we're going to be leveraging, harvesting the school-based and district-based devices we have already here in the district. And so our school teams are organizing and will be deploying the devices they have on site for their students. And so in our assessment, as we've been looking at our numbers and our inventory, we are well-prepared to meet the need for students that are in need. If, if families have appropriate devices and they have what they need for their family, we're just going to ask that they continue to work on those devices, and as soon as the new ones come in, we'll make sure that we're in our one-to-one status that we so desire.
Right. Thank you so much, Dr. Battle.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Player Peters.
And I just want to say thank you. I know this has not been an easy process. I know it's difficult for families trying to plan, but just kind of keep in mind, we want children to be safe and to be healthy as possible, and our employees to be safe and healthy as possible. And I know there are school districts surrounding us who are opening in-person on time, and then, you know, comments made on the national level about it. And I just want to say our first priority is keeping people healthy and safe. We would hate for, you know, a child to, 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 you know, receive COVID, you know, through an environment, and then I know this might be not as smooth as right as we hope or we, that we desire it to be, but I think our first priority, just as a board, I would, hopefully I can speak for the board, is that we want everyone to be safe, and we know we're just in a precarious time. We don't know how the levels are going to go up and down over the next couple of weeks, but just want to thank Dr. Battle and the staff and team. I know it's not been an easy transition, try to catch up in real time and to maneuver in real time with all this going on, that given a system as big as ours, that it's not easy to do it when you only have a small, those are legendary to do districts half our size, or even schools, or maybe even 1% or 2% of our size. And so I just want to just recognize the staff and Dr. Battle, just being nimble in real time, because, you know, we would have thought months from now that we would be where we are with the levels of going up in exponential levels, and the fact that the governor and the mayor are constantly trying to manage all of this stuff. I just want to just put that, I just wanted to say that publicly and for the record.
Thank you, Ms. Peter Players, and, and again, kudos and commendations to this board for prioritizing the health and wellbeing of our students and our employees and their families. So thank you for that, and it's definitely helped accelerate our plans, that our priorities remain our priorities. There are no perfect solutions right now, and there will be bumps and challenges along the way, but we are hard, hard at work, planning, creating again, a continuity of learning plan that gives us some assurances that as things happen, we can shift. And I mentioned months ago that there was no playbook, so we are trying to build one right now to be responsive to what might be upon us even as we move into the fall. So thank you to this board, and I also want to publicly thank our team, our, our, our central office team, our principals, our teachers, everyone who has just lent a hand, our community partners, to make the best out of this situation on behalf of our students and families.
Ms. Cooper Walker.
Thank you, Dr. Battle, and to your whole team. I know this is around the clock, seven days a week kind of endeavor, and appreciate all of your hard work and thoughtfulness here. I want to echo my, my colleagues in saying that our priority here is student-staff safety, and there's so many unknowns still. I mean, we learn in real time every day, new things about this virus and its transmission. And so I'm hoping that schools being closed for the first month or so will incentivize our Nashvilleans, our Nashville community to wear masks and focus on helping us get back in school. So a few questions here. I'm really pleased to see the innovation around using block schedule four-by-four for high schools. I think that's a smart move. Any possibility of doing something like that for middle schools to reduce the load on the number of classes teachers and students are responsible for during this time?
We have definitely looked at all of the scheduling for our pre-K, for our elementary, for our middle, and our high school. What we're trying to accomplish is giving students the same access to their core and their related arts courses and elective courses as they would in the face-to-face environment. Our principals are meeting this week, they actually had a discussion today around the innovation, particularly, we had, there was a large discussion in, with the middle school principals on any considerations to the schedule. So we are, we have thought about it, we continue to plan around it to make sure we have the best scenario, but ultimately, we want to make sure that we're protecting the access to the courses for our students, but in a manageable way. So we have given some flexibility, as you've heard, with high schools, and we'll do the same thing for middle schools and for our youngest learners to make sure that the load is appropriate, and again, it's age-appropriate with the requirements we have within working virtually and via devices, majority of, of the days through at least Labor Day. So that is definitely a consideration. We have not made any final alterations to the middle school schedule, but definitely open to it if we find that that is a need that will help students be most successful.
Okay. You know, I'm worried about EL families that don't have access to a lot of this information, don't know exactly what's available in terms of food and technology and options. And so I know we have the number of translators we have, but I'm wondering if there's a way to be creative with some of our high school juniors and seniors that are multilingual, if they can help amplify and help people understand what's happening. I'm also wondering if you are going to have additional tech support for families in multiple languages, will you have bilingual tech support folks?
Yes, we will. We are actually expanding our Family Information Center approach so that families who are in need of assistance and support, when they call in, there will be a specific line that they can connect with someone in their native language. So we're really excited about that expansion, and we're, we're in the process of rolling that out. We also have prioritized the translation needs for all of our communications that go out, and for the larger public, and it's for, for the board to be aware of as well, we do have tools on our website for our website communications to be translated. So we've tried to think about that through, again, our website, through social media, as well as phone communications with our English learner families, and we have plans to really partner with some of our community partners to get information out. We had a great learning opportunity during remote learning back in the spring. We wanted to move forward with Remote Learning 2.0 to prepare us for the potential of the virtual learning environment on this school year. And so we have lots of learnings, I will tell you, Molly Stovall and team guarantee every day that we prioritize our, our English learners. And so that's why you see a priority in our continuity of learning plan, because we know that is a student group that we need, we want to be inclusive, and that we really want to make sure have all the communications, resources, and supports as every other student. Another point to note is that our EL team and our exceptional education team are working closely together, because we sometimes see similar needs or students who might fall into both categories. And so they're both hard at work, those teams, expanding our services to make sure that we, to the best of our ability, meet the needs of our students and families. So more information to come there, but we're really excited about the expansion of our information services line for families in their native language.
So we've had a lot of families who, parents have lost jobs, and I'm worried that they didn't qualify for reduced, free reduced lunch previously, but they might now. How are we making sure families know how to access those services, that pandemic EBT card?
We have been sharing that information via our communications department. We've again utilized our websites, we've utilized our social media, we've utilized our callouts to get that information. And by the way, our callout system also translates into the native language as a family, as they've identified. We, we continue to push that information out on, on behalf of our families. I too have expressed a concern regarding our CEP program, and I'm having a number of schools that will not qualify this year. Our team has already reached out to state and federal leaders to advocate on our behalf and for other school districts who will have the same need to continue to provide meals as we have been for spring and summer. And so we have advocated up to make sure that they know that there is a need, and our need is definitely, if at all possible, to continue to provide meals in the same manner we have been for the last several months. But in the meantime, Ms. Walker, as you've asked, directed your question, we will continue to communicate to our families, share that information, keep them abreast of timelines for them to apply. And we also have our free and reduced lunch application that will be online very soon that we've already created a communications plan around to get to our families, and really just get them updated, because we've been a CEP district for quite some time. So this is going to be new for everyone, and I've just not given up on our ability to provide both breakfast and lunch to, to everyone. We're still advocating in that space, but we know at minimum, we will have to communicate the CEP, new CEP requirements for the schools that are impacted.
My last question is, I know that we hope one day to return to in-person, and so what is the timeline for having parents select virtual versus in-person, and has that been pushed back? What is that looking like, and how you're going to staff it?
Yes, within the next week, we'll be pushing out our survey for families to begin to identify if they're interested in the face-to-face versus the virtual learning environment after Labor Day. We're going, our plan is to leave that survey open until after school starts, so that parents who might have more informed information as their students engage in the virtual environment, if they need to make a decision for virtual, because their student is being successful and they want to prioritize on the safety side, they can do that, or vice versa. So within the next week, we'll be launching our survey for parents to opt in and out, and our survey will state clearly that this is not locking you in right now, but we will have a deadline by which those determinations need to be finalized.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
Dr. Battle, I have a question that actually came from my high school daughter and her friends. They are worried about this four-by-four high school schedule, because a lot of them take AP classes, but the AP exams fall at the end of the year, so they're worried that if they're taking four AP classes in the fall, and I don't know if it's possible for them to take that, you know, all the APs together, but if they're taking them in the fall, that there will be a gap before they have to actually take the exam. So I was wondering if, are there any, I mean, have we thought about how the APs will be distributed? Will they be taking them all at once? Can we spread that out? And also, I doubt there'll be any flexibility from the AP board, but I was wondering if you'd considered the timing of the exam?
Absolutely. So the first thing is, one of the first questions I always get is, does the four-by-four So the first thing is, one of the first questions I always get is, does the four-by-four limit students in advanced placement and other advanced courses? And it absolutely does not and in most cases, it gives you an opportunity for more. We have already started to work with our high school principals even before today, which was their first day of launch with regards to scheduling the four-by-four block for classes like AP. And so they are sharing best practices. Of course, a few years back, no, not a few years back, probably about 10 years back, we had schools that were on the four-by-four block. So we're leveraging those principals and leaders who know how to do it best to help other schools with their master schedules. And so they're going to be doing things like certain courses, like AP courses that need to be in the spring versus the fall. They may also offer AP courses in the fall, but offer a skinny throughout the rest of the school year to help that continuity of learning for students. And so they have many, many innovative ideas and ways to keep students engaged and learning and aligned to their challenge exams. There are pros and cons to all of the various scheduling types. The one that is most consistent in the four-by-four is given when you take the course and when you take the test. And so our school principals are already working towards making those adjustments in their master schedules so that we are setting students up for success. And so what students might see is that courses that they might start taking, like AP course the first day of school, they might not start until January because their exam is in the spring. In addition to that, our advanced academics team is staying up to date with advanced placement courses to make sure that if they're, as they're making adjustments in their testing schedules, we can do the same. And so we do anticipate that there might likely be some adjustments from some of those organizations and companies to meet the needs of students, giving that across the country. I mean, you're going to have schedules varying all across the country. We're seeing virtual schedules, hybrid schedules, some face-to-face, some virtual. So I, we do anticipate there might be some shifting in testing, but in the meantime, our school teams are adjusting their master schedules to align to when those exams take place. We're also doing that for end-of-course exams as well.
Okay. And just, I didn't understand what you said, but you, I think you said that if a student takes an AP class in fall and they cannot take the exam until spring, there will be some sort of refresher in the spring? Is that what you said? Okay.
So we're pulling out all the stops. We're being innovative to make sure that we're setting our students up for the most success. And so that's the charge I've given our entire team is we've got to do what's best for students. And so if that means we have to have refreshers and I called it a skinny block, that's probably why you didn't understand.
That is what you said, yeah.
So like guilty opportunities for enrichment for courses like APIB Cambridge.
I will tell them because I am stopping probably a petition coming from some high school students at Hill who are worried about it. So do we have other comments or questions?
I do, Ms. Ferg.
Okay, Dr. Gentry.
Hey, Dr. Battle. Again, everything that everyone has said, kudos, great job on really the deep thinking on all of the things that need to be considered here by you and your team. It's been, I'm sure not what you thought you were signing up. I can't imagine. So again, just thank you so much for staying the course with us and continuing, you know, to not put a period at this, right? So I know there's a semicolon at the end of this presentation and you guys are continuing to refine and hone and do what's best. So I just have two brief questions. One, when parents are finally slated into whatever their option is, is that an option they're committed to until the end of the fall semester? And can, if we find ourselves in this same situation, forbid, can they change that option for the spring semester, for the spring half of the year?
Yes.
Okay.
They can.
Okay. But they're committed for the term?
They'll be committed for the rest of the semester, correct?
Got you. And then my next question is, I've had a few organizations to reach out or to share that they're providing space, opening up their locations in the Northwest, why? Church mold pastors that have called offering to open up their church facilities as spaces for common, you know, a space for students to come, of course, bringing their device and having some place for them to be during the day, right? So for some parents, that would be very, very helpful for having to return to work. Are these types of offerings or this type of community outreach, is there a way for us to kind of coordinate that? Are we looking to coordinate in the district or help communicate? Is there, is there a way that, or someone within the district that a church should contact to say, here's my schedule, we'll be open from here and we can hold 30 kids and this is how they sign up? What's, is there a process for that?
Absolutely. Jennifer Bale is our contact here in the district and she has already been engaged in many conversations with churches and other organizations and she is convening that group every week or two to provide updates and supports for organizations or companies that are going to be supporting students during this virtual space, particularly with regards to daycare. So Jennifer Bale, jennifer.bale@mmps.org. That's her email and will be the contact to direct anyone who is interested and volunteering in that space to support us.
Perfect. Thank you.
And Ms. Ferg, if you don't mind me, going back to the four-by-four block, I do want to state that as you survey high schools across the state, the majority, if not all but us, are on a four-by-four block.
Okay.
So it is the most common high school schedule intimacy and probably even wider than that. I think locally, we are the only school that's not, school district that's not on a four-by-four block currently.
And to be clear, I've heard a lot of support for this schedule. I just know the students were worried about AP specifically and wondered how that might work. Other questions?
Ms. Elrod does, Madam Chair.
Okay, Ms. Elrod.
As everybody else has said, I know that this was a tremendous amount of work. I have told lots of families, it's, I've never known it to be more true than it takes a village than right now. So I appreciate our MMPS Village really stepping up to the plate and creating all these multiple versions of plans and trying to prepare for those unintended consequences and all of it. So something that I had not expected, because I just hadn't thought about it, but I've had a lot of parents reach out to me about creating what they're calling a pod for within their students. It seems like most pods would be created among families that have parents that need to go into the office and so they would trade off days and those students would be of varying ages, but for the most part would be inside the same school. Would it be possible for these parents to do pods and these students in multiple age groups or grades do their classwork at the same time?
So that's a tricky question to answer. So yes, because of the way that we'll be providing synchronous and asynchronous learning opportunities, I think that where you might see a little bit of shifting as far as time is concerned is their assignment by teacher might differ. And so when their teacher is providing a live lesson might be different from another student, and I guess if the question is, can they be assigned accordingly, that might prove to be challenging and complex for us, just simply because every school builds their own master schedule and assigns students accordingly and they know more of the intimate details about who, when and where with those assignments. But generally speaking, if students are working in Schoology, working in our Florida Virtual School, they could be working at the same time. If there are similar classes, they can definitely log on at the same time. Hopefully there'll be social distancing and with the proper PPE if they, if they do that. But we also are recommending and kind of expectation we're putting before our teachers is for them to record their lessons so that at any point in time, if students or families need to go back and view them, they can. So generally speaking, yes, but if it's about student assignment, that will likely prove to be complex and very challenging for school teams to pull off. So I would encourage families who have that specific question, given their interest in a student pod, to reach directly out to their school.
Okay. So it's best to really organize those through the leadership at the schools, not only, I would think it also affects like attendance and being able to count that student for attendance if they're in different pods?
Yes.
Okay. So even though we're doing the synchronized learning and curriculum, there are going to be differing teacher assignments among even the same grade level?
That's correct.
Okay. Got it. Okay. Then I have said for the most part the same thing. Okay. My follow-up questions are in regards to meal distribution. So I see and I am glad to hear that students, including virtual students, will be able to pick up meals at their school of attendance and that also lunch and breakfast will still be provided. Are we planning on being able to do that throughout, I think you might have said this and I might have missed it. Are we hoping to do that, it sounds like through the end of the year, but do we have a set date of when that really does end? It's my understanding that our funding ends for our lunches through, like a little bit past Labor Day. So is there, do we have that planning? Do we have that budget in place? Do we think there's going to be those dollars available to continue it?
So our plan, based upon us being a CEP-approved district, not every school qualifies, but because we're a CEP district, we will be able to provide breakfast to every student regardless of the school they attend. The difference is if you're in a CEP school with regards to lunch. So all CEP-approved schools, we will be able to provide lunch to those students. For students, for the 55 schools that are not CEP schools, you can either purchase or you can fill out the free and reduced lunch form and be eligible for those lunches. And that's why we've got to have a blitz with that information because we need our families in need to make sure that they fill out that application. At the end of, and can feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's at the end of this month, the current program that, the umbrella that we're falling under to be able to provide meals to all school-age youth in Nashville will end and therefore we're reverting back to the CEP eligibility provisions.
Got it.
That will continue, those provisions continue throughout the school year. And in order to, I mean, it will be, I don't want to throw a number out there, but it's millions of dollars for us to cover the gap between what it will cost to cover the non-CEP eligible schools.
Got it. Because I saw the letter about the communication about the community eligibility provision or CEP letter that was included from Friday from your communication with us, is when is that going out to parents?
The, if I'm not mistaken, the application goes live the start of, either Friday or the start of next week.
Okay.
Let me see here. It goes live this week. So it will go live this week for CEP. And so we will get that information out ASAP. Our team has already been planning and working towards that communication being blasted out as soon as the application is available.
Got it. Okay. So the emergency fund for free lunches ends approximately at the end of this month and that that will continue when this, when school continues, either by your own personal payment or if you qualify through CPE, if you're one of the 55 schools.
That's correct.
Got it. And then my last question is about priority for exceptional ed. So it states, of course, procedures on how IEP teams determine and document regression and I'm assuming, but I would like to make sure that that's also for students with 504s.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, student with disabilities and students with 504 plans.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions? Okay. It appears that we don't have any more comments or questions, so thank you again, Dr. Battle, for this very thorough presentation. We appreciate it. And we will now turn to announcements. So I will just go around the table, starting with Dr. Gentry.
Thank you, Ms. Ferg. Couple of things. Number one, I want to extend an extra thank you out to Dr. Battle and to David Profit for some assistance they provided at one of our District 1 school locations over the Fourth of July weekend, as a matter of fact. So thank you for actually taking the text and the phone call and responding as quickly as you did. It was definitely much appreciated. Also, I just want to take this moment to, I don't know if I'm apologizing to Dr. Battle, sending her a virtual hug. Yesterday, she had a group of people to organize a protest outside of her home concerning the Orion contract and the failure of a sub-subcontractor, not Orion directly, but a sub-subcontractor to pay some individuals that had done some work for them, for us, had done some work through them for MMPS. And I just want to say that that was extremely disappointing. It was extremely inappropriate, standing outside of Dr. Battle's house with two young children in her home, organizing a protest in her community, in her neighborhood was, was, it's just not the way to express those kinds of concerns. And so I just want Dr. Battle to know that, that, I don't know what it is we can do to help you, but I know for one, and there are several others, I'm sure on this call, that don't support that kind of behavior and that recourse for getting concerns with our district aired, vetted and raised. We have board meetings for a reason. We have an agenda. There is a way to get a topic on the agenda that needs to be discussed, but I believe we have discussed this matter and the board has taken a position about what our expectations are of our contractors. We've made those expectations clear with David Profit and others that handle those kinds of contracts. We've made some adjustments to our expectations with our primary vendors. And so we, our part. If there's anything else to be done, that is a board action, not a Dr. Battle action and should never, never show up on the front steps of her home, totally and completely inappropriate. So Dr. Battle, I guess I am apologizing that you and your family had to endure that on yesterday and hope that another pathway is chosen by these individuals to vet those concerns.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Gentry. Ms. Elrod.
Thank you. I first want to let everybody know for Overton 2020 seniors that this week you're able to pick up your refund checks and if you borrowed any electronic devices, you can also pick those up or drop those off, excuse me, at the school and you have to do so before you can pick up your diploma. Posted times for that are readily available all over the many areas that Overton reaches out to everybody, whether it's through their social media groups or their emails or the PTA. So they're throughout the week, but they are for blocks at time, Monday through Friday. And of course, go pick up your diplomas, refund checks for prom and please return your electronics as needed for the upcoming school year, as we have had many conversations about our need for all of our electronics. Additionally, I want to say to Dr. Gentry's point that it is inappropriate for groups of people or anyone to show up at someone's house in that manner. I know that that is alarming and scary and that it's also just not the appropriate channel to have productive conversations. So I would ask that people no longer do that to Dr. Battle or to any of our employees or to my colleagues. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Fearing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to echo my colleagues' comments about what happened at Dr. Battle's home last night. Dr. Battle, I'm so sorry that you had to go through that and your family had to go through that and your neighbors had to go through that. I hope this will not happen ever again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bugs.
Yes, thank you. Ditto to all of that. And I will say, I've spoken with my council member about us supporting our neighborhood schools by joining the PTO. So Freddie O'Connell and I are both considering, you know, joining the PTO at, thank you, baby, at Brevinvest or at Jones and many community members. Yes, baby. You know what? Forget the rest of this. I'll just talk about it next time. Englewood Elementary will have the town hall on Thursday. Okay. And Fall Hamilton will have their, their partner meeting tomorrow at 1:00. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bush.
Yes, hi. Thank you, Madam Chair. I have some exciting news to announce. Most of the board members may have gotten this in their emails already. I have the pleasure to announce NFL Seahawks safety Yugo Amati is partnering with Community Achieves, myself, along with representatives from Nashville Metro Public Schools to host a back-to-school drive-through event for students at the Mountain View Elementary School. Yugo's Amati. Yugo and Community Achieves will provide backpacks and school supplies for students along with groceries for families to pick up. Mountain View Elementary has identified 75 students who are in need of school supplies for the upcoming year. Yugo will be taking photos with students, social distancing, and wearing masks as they drive up through the parking lot to receive their supplies. This will take place at Mountain View Elementary Parking Lot, located at 3820 Rufusboro Pike, Antioch, Tennessee. As an Antioch native and former Mountain View student, Yugo has seen firsthand the large need for basic items like food and school supplies for students. Once COVID-19 hit and this need became more severe, Yugo wanted to take action by donating to help students and their families during this tough time. With the uncertainty around the upcoming school year, Yugo is hoping to get kids excited about the new year in whatever form it takes on. So I would invite board members, if you want to come out and meet Yugo, it would be great. And also wanted to thank Dr. Battle for helping coordinate this event. Thank you.
Ms. Claire Peters.
I want to echo my, not former, so sorry. My previous colleagues who've spoken about the protest at Dr. Battle's house. As someone who's been in actions and participated in actions, who led actions, there is a time and place for actions to happen, particularly when all avenues have been exhausted. And I do not believe all those avenues have not been exhausted. I think there's people on this board who are willing to work towards the issue, but there are ways to do it in a manner that's do it. I think also be mindful, we commit a lot to this board, we give a lot of time and resources, but unfortunately, being a member of this board is not a full-time job. We do have day jobs to do and doing things in a timely fashion. We need a little bit more space and grace than literally hours before meetings or things happen for us to address issues. And I want the public to be mindful of, be mindful of that, that we are willing to address and work issues, but we do need time. You know, we wish this was a full-time job and had the full-time pay to go with it, but we do make sacrifices in our careers, our day jobs. A lot of us have employers that are very fortunate sometimes to give us a little space and leeway to address issues. But we need, but the expectations have to be realistic of how fast we can respond to things, given the present situation. We are trying to get 80, over 80 kids, 80,000 kids and over 10,000 employees ready to start school in literally two weeks that we have, we are dealing with multiples of issues. And so there, as my colleague said, there are avenues to do it. Yes, people have First Amendment rights, but also it's democracy, and avenues need to be exhausted before actions take place and to be done in a, I want to say fair and equitable way, but that's not the right words I want to use at the moment. And so I just want to echo my colleagues for that. And then my other provocative announcement, people, please raise your masks. The reason we are in the situation that we are is because people are not wearing their masks. I understand personal liberties, but personal liberties also have a cost to the public and to the community. And being in a situation that we are right now is a consequence of the community not making sure we're taking care of those, particularly young people who are vulnerable to this virus. And we do not know how the virus reacts to young people differently from adults. And so please, 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 wear your masks. We have a more normal environment for our students. We can put them back into the classroom in a timely manner, but everyone has to participate. And I know it's inconvenient, but this is an inconvenience that affects our children. And our first job is to protect our children in a safe environment. In order to do that, everyone must wear the mask so we can get to a place where the spread is minimal so we can do what we need to do as a board. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Puka Walker.
Thank you so much. I want to start by congratulating the new principals in my schools. Trey Stevens, who is a new principal at Weston Middle, Russell Young, who's at Percy Priest, and Robin Schumate at Waverly Belmont. Excited to work with you guys in the coming year. And I know our students are in great hands with these important and talented school leaders. I have been working this summer with the Urban Fellowship, Urban Leaders Fellowship. And I had some fellows this summer who did research on around high school start times and best practice. And they are going to do a presentation a week from tonight at 5:00. And I will share, I've shared it on my Twitter account, I'll share it on my Facebook page. If you want to come, it's strictly informational. I'm not talking about board strategy here. We're simply talking about the research and what's happened across the country around adolescent development and high school start times. And then the other thing I want to say is, I echo my colleagues around what's happened with workers' dignity and Armando Arzate. And I want to speak directly to Armando. You know, and that's all I'm going to say to him is that going to Dr. Battle's home is not the solution. It crosses a line for us that as a board, we will recognize that the solution lies with us and not with Dr. Battle, and it made it personal. And so I hope that we can find resolution here. And I hope that Armando can get paid. I do believe he deserves to be paid for the work that he did. And I do believe that it's a just cause. So I'm going to say a little bit of that in Spanish for Armando. I hope he's listening, and if he's not, I hope someone will share with him. Señor Arzate, queremos que sepa que Dr. Battle está con usted, que este junta directiva está con usted, que queremos apoyarle y pagarle, pero ir a la casa de Dr. Battle no está bien con nosotros, que no podemos apoyar eso. Y queremos trabajar con usted, con workers' dignity, pero eso cruza una línea para nosotros y no podemos apoyar ese tipo de actividad. Pueden venir al board of education at Bransford Avenue, pasar todo el día ahí con letreros, pero en la casa de ella no está bien con nosotros. Y esperamos llegar a una solución pronto. So anyway, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. And I just wanted to welcome Dr. Bellamy, who is the new chief of academics in schools for MMPS. And that's obviously a very important hire for our district. And so I look forward to having a conversation with him. Also had a great conversation with Robert Fisher, who is Mayor Cooper's new education advisor. I talked to him last week, and I'm looking forward to continued partnership with the mayor's office. And for the board members and everyone here on the meeting tonight, thank you so much for your patience and your engagement. I know this has been an extremely long meeting, nearly six hours, but we were able to cover all of the topics that we needed to cover. I want to thank the charter school office for preparing a presentation pretty quickly in order for us to meet the deadline on the charter approvals tonight. And we will not hold a meeting at the end of July, as is customary for the board. So I will just look forward to seeing all of you in August. And there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.